April 24th, meeting of the planning board zoning commission to order. Could I have a roll call please, Cody?
Yes, Al Blumer.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Sue.
Here.
Marie.
Here.
Pete.
Here.
And Sandy.
Here.
Okay, welcome everybody. The first order of business is to review the minutes of our April 10th meeting. I will say they were fairly complete before I hear a motion to approve. Does anybody have any outstanding issues, corrections to them? Teresa?
Yeah, section four B.
Four B?
It says Dale Ave instead of Daley.
It's D-A-L-Y.
Say that to me again.
Uh, four B, it says Dale Avenue instead of Daley Avenue.
What line is it on?
It's uh-
I've got Daley Avenue online.
Mine says Dale.
The second Dale though.
Four B, the last sentence there. Before C. Hearing for the Dale Avenue abandonment should be hearing for the Daley.
It's scheduled for April 30th with council.
Right.
You're looking at four B?
Al?
Yeah.
It's right here.
Right here. Where is it now? I lost it.
I don't see it.
Oh, boy.
Dale.
I see.
It's under- it's under five.
I'll get it corrected.
I got it, I got it, thank you.
Sorry, I was looking at the other.
Anything else?
And, and yes, it's not so much an error, it's just a clarification. On five A, it's talking about the committee.
No?
And I thought, oh, what committee? And then I remembered, we were talking about the selection committee. So it'd be nice to have that clarification, but it's not necessary. It's just through time, everyone's gonna forget and say, what committee was that?
Um, I would say the review committee maybe? Is that fine? Review, the re- the RFP review committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Make that correction, Cody?
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else, Teresa?
Not for me.
Good catches. Anybody else? I thought they were very complete, um, quite detailed actually. All right, I need a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes with the two amendments as mentioned.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, in the discussion. Hearing none, Cody, we call the roll please.
Yes, Al.
Yes.
Jeff.
Abstain.
Teresa?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Marie?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And Sandy.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, communications from the board, um, anything on urban renewal agency update?
Uh, yeah, we haven't met since the first of April, so really no changes since then. Our next meeting's gonna be in May. Um, but the committee is working on establishing criteria for evaluating, um, proposals and, and ranking system or scoring system. Looking at a sort of variety of examples from other communities that Cody, uh, researched for, for the committee or for the agency. And I think the other item they're considering, um, set aside, setting aside, funds up to a certain amount before really reviewing any, any proposals. Basically to build up sort of a, a reserve or, or cash or, or amount of funds to be available for, for future projects.
Any questions of Jeff on urban renewal?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have you filled the two vacant seats?
Uh, not, I don't think so, yeah. Yeah, that, I think that was up for his discussion.
Is there applications or notifications been sent out that there are vacancies?
Uh, I think it, was it that before the council to consider and then make a decision?
I don't know.
The answer is it was identified that they had five, the board called for five to seven. And the recommendation from the urban renewal was that, yes, they wanted to have seven rather than the five. And so we have advertised for those, I believe they were advertising for two cycles.
Okay, they're advertised-
I have not been notified of any, um, in, but I can take that as a follow-up action.
They've been advertised in Carbon County News and Facebook?
That, that, well, I don't know that Facebook is one of our standard advertising places, but Carbon County News is, so. Um, I would have to follow up with the city clerk to find out exactly what those are.
On the city website?
Yeah, city website, in fact, I'd probably go check and see if it's still there.
Why not use, um, the Red Lodge Buzz? It seems that everybody actually kind of looks at that.
I do know-
Challenge your premise.
I do know this, that Danae posts some stuff on the website under a Red Lodge site. And I forget what's what it is, do you, can you remember?
Well, the city has a, a Facebook page too.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's the one I'm referring to, yeah.
I know we have a fairly standard list that we hit and, and that's where they go, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking in the background to see if I can see that they're posted out there. But my, my recollection is the direction was that it was gonna be posted for two cycles.
Okay.
But I have not been notified, normally I, I hear when applications-
Make sure that the public knows that they're looking for people. And who to contact if they're interested.
Right.
Those are usually posted in the post office too.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Uh, one more. When I attended the last meeting, in reference to the funds, the people were talking, they have a hundred thousand dollars put away?
That's the estimate right now, I think they're waiting to hear final figures from the county.
And is that in an escrow account or?
Uh, it's prob- I, that I can't answer.
Okay, thank you.
But, but yeah, their intent is to kind of build on that until, until it reaches about three hundred thousand and then-
Okay.
Thank you.
Or that's been the discussion anyway.
Is there any projection as to when we might see some actual, um, activity within the urban renewal district in terms of building applications or whatever?
The, the only one that was received has been the one on the coffee kiosk and no- nothing since-
That's the only one, okay. All right, moving on, then, city council rep, Sandy?
Yeah, um, phases two and three of the Stormwater project have been approved to begin as soon as possible. We are hoping, they are hoping to have it completed by the end, before the snow flies. I won't say the end of summer because lord knows when that is. So that's going to be good. There was a discussion on allowing fireworks to be discharged in the city limits between noon and midnight on the fourth of July. There was a discussion that put it up for vote, see what the people really want. Or that the city council can actually just amend the ordinance. And the feeling at the table was to amend the ordinance because then if it is a catastrophic failure, it can be amended again. Where if you do a vote, you have to go back to the people. So, um, we're gonna be looking at that again, um, May 14th. Um, the good news was, is as you know, we've been trying to get another police officer in town. We have seven police officers, the same as we had almost thirty years ago. And the town has grown a little bit since. But the school board went to the police chief and would like him to hire a school resource officer and share the cost of that officer and depending on, I mean, they volunteered fifty-fifty on the salary. But it kind of depends on how much time that resource officer will be, you know, required to be at the middle school or the high school, so that's a really good news. We had a short discussion on annexing, um, Grandview, Grandview South and Woodlands. And it turns out that the agreements, the annexation agreements that Brian Hanna had two of them. And he's supposed to get me those. So we can see what would happen, what the city would be responsible for by annexing them. And then there needs to be a cost analysis about what it's gonna cost us versus what it's going to bring in. There was also a discussion on rodeo park, creating a park from the entrance-
Which park?
Rodeo.
Oh, rodeo park.
From the entrance on Highway seventy-eight right up to the, uh, the private land that the rodeo association owns on both sides. I think the general consensus where we were going to wait till the end of May till the airport, uh, is all settled. Because right now, the rodeo association has a lease with the airport board. So in order to make it a part, park, they would have to, um, get rid of that lease. That lease would have to be done. And the last one, well, we had a nice presentation on addressing, which was approved seven years ago. And the setting in public since then. And, um, it was a very interesting discussion on hundred and fifty-one homes would have to change their, um, address. Because all the east-west streets, which are numbered streets, would actually start at the, um, south end and go up. Because where we are now, as you get to First Street and after First Street, then there's Robinson. So they kind of run out of numbers there. And we're not exactly easy to find on any kind of navigation, um, system at all. So that is still in discussion. And the last thing is we are gonna review the, um, all the MOUs, um, what makes it an MOU versus a lease. And try to make them all uniform to a certain degree. So that's in the works, that's it.
Wow, okay, any questions to Sandy?
Yes, Sandy? Grandview, North and South and the Woodlands, is metalwood involved in any of this?
No.
Okay.
No, uh, Grandview, Grandview South and Woodlands all have city sewer. And because they have city sewer, when they were granted city sewer, they agreed to annexation when the city chose to. And Woodlands is down to six vacant lots. And we know Grandview and Grandview South are all being built as we speak. So we just don't know whether the cost, um, would tr- would be less than the property taxes that they come in with. So we'll have to see. We did get a map from Chief Schrock showing that five-mile radius outside the city limits. That is the agreement with the county. And it's massive, massive agreement, it's, it's huge. So a lot of those people are getting police services basically for free. So, um, we're still working at trying to get an investigator, a full-time investigator on the police department. But, um, we're looking into, there's a, a group called COPS and they do a lot of grants. And they may be able to give us a grant for the school resource officer. So we're, we're hopeful, we're, we're just trying to get more money. Trying so we can afford a, a, at least one more officer. Two, of course, would be lovely, one investig- one investigator and one school resource officer.
Um, I have a question for- I'm sorry. Um, and maybe Dave can answer too. Where are we at exactly with this interlocal with the airport regarding rodeo park? What, I haven't checked in lately. But you were saying that city council was waiting on the airport board?
Well, that agreement, it expires May thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay? So we're-
The interlocal?
The interlocal agreement. And it's, yeah, it basically expires, it's been kicked down the road to the point. And I know that there's still, I assume, working on it, knowing that there's only four weeks left. And it seemed silly to go ahead and dedicate a park that's already under lease with the airport board until that's settled. Once that's settled, then we'll, we'll see what we're gonna do. The nice thing about having rodeo park is that they would take care of the weeds and the, and the mowing and handle the schedule.
Who'd they?
The rodeo association would assume that. In exchange for that, of course, they're going to, you know, they'll handle the schedule and approval. Especially, well, first off, all of those that are sponsored by the rodeo association. So if the rodeo assoc- association is a cosponsor for the rally, for instance, then they would be the ones that would approve it.
I'll, I'll get more clarification later, I was just kind of curious.
So, yeah, that, that, that current approval of that is actually based on the agreement that the rodeo association has with the airport board, which of course includes the county. To, to your question most directly, um, each side has put forth a, a version of what they think that airport agreement looks like. And we basically just need to get to a version that both sides agree on. I think we're there, there was a, there was a hiccup and a bump in the road, um, this week, which I meet with the commissioners tomorrow. But I anticipate we're gonna, we're gonna come to a, an agreement on that. But we're, again, our, our goal is to basically just make sure everybody agrees on the terms of that new interlocal. As far as just to add a little additional clarity from my understanding on the park, the formation of the park, um, is something that's, that's independent and can act in parallel with the airport agreement. It's basically, when that land was originally donated to the city, it was designated as part of the airport as a mechanism of controlling that it was only used for what's called compatible uses. AKA somebody didn't put a high-rise in right there. Um, which of course comes back to some zoning things. And, and this board has looked at like an airport overlay and other things to protect building around the airport. And so what's happening is that's a different mechanism to accomplish the same goal. And so in the airport agreement, what's actually happening is the boundaries of what are the airport are shrinking considerably. That to, to just the, the part that the airport board is responsible maintaining. The part to the west of the fence is we are looking at designating that as a park. And that's primarily as a protective mechanism. So as we have different blocks of green, um, whether it be Van Dyke, whether it be Moran, whether it be, you know, it, it's a way of protecting a, a particular piece of land. As, as far as how that ties to the rodeo association, um, there is a, there is a working assumption that once the rodeo association feels that their concerns and interest in, in the perpetuation of the rodeo are protected, that there will no longer be a need for that existing agreement with the airport board and they will voluntarily abandon it. So that's, that's how the pieces tie together is the expectation, at least from my perspective, is I don't expect them to abandon that agreement that they have in place, which was made out of kind of a position of desperation back up against the wall. But it's something, and so once we get them something better, I anticipate that they'll abandon that agreement. And at that point, um, if the new airport local agreement is in place and that part of land is no longer, the county is no longer involved with that land west of the fence, then, then the, how that land is used and the approval of that land and stuff is narrowed down back to a single entity, which is the city. And then if we pursue and set up an MOU with them or if, it, that's, that's kind of a, a future and additional step from that point. But it's mostly just bifurcating the issue of the airport and the block and the block west of the fence. And so the, the point is there's, there's two separate agreements we're trying to reconcile so that everybody's happy signing the dotted line. Did I understand the question properly and was that a suitable answer?
Good, lots of-
Yes.
I'm sorry, Al, what did you say?
Yeah, lots of information there. Teresa?
I just wondered if the interlocal agreement was moving ahead without, um, having a final airport master plan? And, and where are we with that?
The, the answer is the airport agreement will be completed without a master plan. Because part of the things that have to be present for there to be a master plan is that there has to be an established order and agreement on the airport. So by definition, it happens afterwards. And that project is kind of put on hold when the airport was tossed up in the air. But that is, that also puts it back in the spot that the city will be the only agency signing off on it. That, I mean, that's not a true statement. Whoever's on the agreement, so it'd be the city and the county and the airport board signing off on that. But there, there is still an intent to have an airport master plan. That is not a quick process, that will not be done prior to the end of May by any means.
That's what I was wondering, I thought-
I, I don't wanna go too far down this rabbit hole.
No.
But tho- that, those things should be happening in parallel too, are they not? I mean, it's not, you're, they're not operating-
They are in a spot that it's on hold because they can't turn it in without an agreement in the paper, so it's-
I know, but the communication back and forth knows kind of what, which direction each one is going into, right, or not?
Well, you say which one, so we are-
The inter, the interlocal agreement and the, and the master plan should not be operated totally independently of each other. They should be operating parallel.
That, that is a true statement. It, it is fair to state that the master plan at it, is at a current stoppage waiting for us.
Right.
We, we, we are a block that needs to be cleared before they pick that up and resume.
Neither one is operating in a vacuum, they kind of know what's going on.
That is a true statement.
Okay. Teresa? Okay?
That's the best we can do.
Yep. Anything else for Sandy? Okay, county, anything there?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. When Cody and I, uh, and Jeff were putting this, um, agenda together, noticing that there was no really actionable items before us, I went to our ranking sheet to see if there was some things there that we could begin discussing, um, as we moved down the road. And I noticed on here that we've, we've been making some pretty good progress with the revitalization and growth policy and so forth. But the city council had asked us to make a priority of annexation, de-annexation requirements and procedures. So I asked Cody to put that on the agenda to begin that discussion. Cody, do you wanna start off on that?
Yeah, and pardon me guys, I have a case of laryngitis, so my voice is terrible. I wanted to include in there your current annexation policy, which is your first piece of your packet. It's ordinance number nine seventeen. It's, it's a good document. I think we found like in the last year especially, that there's some wiggle room to clean some things up and maybe identify some more clarity within process. And after that, I included for you kind of a flow chart of annexation by petition. This is just out of your Montana code annotated, but a simple way to see kind of which way process goes. And then also just snips of the specifics of annexation codes and exclusion. So I think, I, looking back, I believe over the last two years, it looks like you've had, I wanna say, maybe two, possibly three annexations come to the table to council. I don't believe all of those went through, but at least they were started. And they've all been handled a little bit differently depending on which planner was at the helm. And then you've als- council has also looked at an exclusion just recently, as in March. So there's, I think there's a lot of discussion to be had. It's probably important to start looking at some other annexation documents and if there's room for growth within your policy and your ordinance. Remember, a lot of times these annexations and exclusions don't come through planning board and zoning. They, unless they're tied- They, unless they're tied to some other type of permit, but generally they just go through council. So we'll start there. Any discussion or question?
Does that not drive a follow-up action then that, uh, city council may do the annexation, but the follow-up to that is there has to be some zoning applied to that newly annexed property?
Yeah, there should be. Yeah, whether you're working with annexation or exclusion, you're going to have a map amendment of some sort. So, yeah, that should follow if they go all the way through. There's a little bit of a timeline in that after the fact. But in the middle of the actual process of whether we annex or exclude, that does not include planning board, just the follow-up.
Okay, Teresa?
Oh, I'm just wondering if, uh, so I'm just wondering what the approach is here? If we're being presented this to understand that there are differences in nine one seven, the ordinance as it exists, that need to be updated before we move ahead with annexation. For instance, G public hearing in nine one seven says, "Planning board and the city council shall both hold public hearings." And what we just talked about was different from that. So, uh, what are we, what are we doing here? Are we looking to change this ordinance before moving ahead?
Yeah, I'm, uh, let me follow up on that question. I was gonna ask you, is there anything in there that caught your attention, Cody, in terms of the ordinance or the documents you sent us that we should look at for review or concern?
Yeah, I have a marked up document with just some notes on it. So maybe I provide that to you for future, that you could lo- look over and go from there.
Okay, the marked up document, is that for us to make a re- uh, uh, suggestion to, is that for council or both?
I think it'd be worth discussion for both. I mean, I think this is more of a conversation, kind of going back to like where you guys focus your time, right? This is an item that's been identified as a priority, um, to some extent. So how much time do you wanna put into it? Maybe you, I, I, this would be a question for Dave, but maybe and Sandy. But where is council on annexation? Like, is it a pressing issue, is it not?
Okay, Sandy, um, actually, you're the, you're the one that kind of brought this to our attention from council. Do you wanna comment before I go to Dave?
We're at, uh, we're looking at, um, cost, you know.
Looking at what?
We're trying to determine, would the property revenue offset the expense to the city? What does the city owe them in order to annex them? This, this annexation of the, these three, um, particular subdivisions is because they already have city sewer and they're already being serviced by, um, our police department, but they're not paying for it because they're not part of the city. So the question became, do we have to provide, um, water to those lots that are, that, that are not yet built? What's the cost of that? What's the cost of road maintenance? What's the cost of the snow removal? So we're trying to do a cost analysis, and I know Public Works is working on that, before we move ahead. So.
What I'm trying to determine is what role will the planning board have in this process? And, and all the things that you mentioned are council stuff.
Right, but I think that there's going to be some zoning that comes in. And I personally think that, that when there is a proposed annexation, that before it's approved, there, we should propose some zoning for that, prior to that.
So I, I think I'm, I'm trying to understand here, you're moving ahead with analyzing the request for annexation and the cost analysis, and that's great. The question that I had was, do we need to update nine one seven, which explains the process and the involvement of the planning board in considering all this A, B, C, D, E? Cause it is spelled out, but there are updates in, in Montana code annotated twenty twenty-three that could be updated in this ordinance at the same time that you're looking at the application itself.
Right, and that, and that won't come in front of this board. But I thought that this board's role would be in proposing what the zoning might be for those areas. I mean, right now, we know, you know, we know what is there, but we'd have to have some zoning in there. And I noticed in nine one seven was, uh, developed in twenty fifteen after Grandview, Grandview South were, were, uh, allowed the sewer. So there aren't any parks there, where this says that there must be a park in order to.
Okay.
Annex it.
So, so I think what you're saying is you'd like to have planning board's recommendation on how that annexed area would be.
Known.
Known as part of the proposal for annexation.
Correct.
So there's three moving parts now, the ordinance, the application, and how planning board sees it.
Yeah, but we can't do that to know what it is and.
But in relation to the growth policy at least, or maybe, I mean, that's a consideration already.
Yeah.
So, yeah, maybe that has to wait. I don't know.
Jeff, Jeff, do you have any comments on this?
Well, I think, I mean, I like the idea of, of reviewing and having a discussion about what zoning would be in place as, as those areas are annexed. I think that's certainly appropriate, um, uh, for something for us to come before the board. Both those areas are within, uh, future land use boundary around Red Lodge. So that's addressed in the growth policy somewhat, not very clearly, that, that I'd have to kind of look at what, I mean, we need to look at, at that chapter or section in the growth policy to see what it says about future land use.
But again, until we get a zoning appli- or, or an annexation application, we don't. So would we be operating parallel with the council at that point? Or would the council be waiting for us to, to make a zoning recommendation?
No, I think, I think one needs to wait to decide if the council is going to.
Oh, okay.
Recommend annexation of, of those two or maybe all three, depending on, on what it is. I mean, the, all those lands are adjacent to the city limits. Um, last night I heard a comment about Ron Wolf's one thousand acres on the other side of Bear Creek Highway. That's adjacent, and they are broken into twenty acre parcels. And so who knows what might happen with that particular land? And what we would require in zoning, if, if in fact they come to us, uh, come to the city council and say, "We wanna have, you know, five hundred acres, uh, brought into the city."
Uh, Dave?
If, if I may, so let me, let me jump in, uh, just before we go down a path we don't wanna go. So, um, first off, what we do want to do in the context of this particular discussion in group is we do not wanna talk about specific, my understanding is we do not wanna talk about specific pieces of property or landowners and such until such time as it's been publicly noticed in there. So, but I think, uh, just to, to kind of share that, the reason that the question is coming up about annex and de-annexation is there are actually, as mentioned, three parcels that are already within the city, or, excuse me, that already receive city services, specifically sewer. They also do receive police coverage, but that's actually through another agreement with the, the county. It was the intent in reviewing those historical documents that all of those were going to be parts of the city and be annexed into the city in a re- fairly short-term, immediate timeframe. There was no expectation that the city was going to be providing sewer services for non-city residents. It just, it just hasn't happened. Additionally, there are additional development possibilities that have come up to the south of current city boundaries, as well as to the north of city boundaries, that would require city services in order for those developments to proceed, specifically sewer. And so, um, we do not have any formal applications in, but we are anticipating that there are gonna be applications that come in for that. Um, as far as the role that this body plays, one of the things that I've had Cody working with me on um, in development to, to, to do the handoff, has developed what's called a RACI matrix on individual paths. So RACI says who's responsible for doing the work. And so when it comes to annexation or de-annexations, um, that is, is the, the planner. Um, and then they also have another role, which is called who's consulted. You've got who's accountable for it, which is the mayor ultimately. But, but the planner's doing most of the work. Uh, the consultant is the planning board, is the council. Um, the council actually has a role in that as far as that they will approve, approve the annexation. But just like if we have a project that comes in that involves public works, one of the questions that I anticipate council is going to ask and try to have ready and address in advance is, what does our public works think of this project? So if we go to council and say, "Here's an annexation," I am anticipating that the question is going to be, what is the planning board's input on this? So even though there's a post-action of actually coming in and doing a re, an, an updated zoning map, I anticipate if I were on council, which I was for a while, and, and somebody came to me and wanted to do an annexation, I would want the input of the planning board. So where we are at this point is finalizing and nailing down the process so we understand what we're doing, how we should be doing. It's open, it's transparent, it's consistent, it's legal. That's what the pieces that we're putting together to do that. And I, and, and so, um, even that process, I think consulting the planning board for input and thoughts is an important part of that process that may spark something that I hadn't thought of, something that, that the planners hadn't necessarily thought of. But at least it raises the concerns of what this board would be as we prepare to look at, as of yet, well, the ones, the ones that are looking to get some sewers, those will actually be an application. The ones that already have those services, that, my understanding, I should qualify with that, is that the city will initiate that process. But none of those have been started at this point. What we're doing is evaluating and making sure we understand the process and the rules of the game before we start it.
Okay. Teresa?
Based on what you just said, Mayor Dave, it sounds like the ordinance nine one seven does need to be updated to clarify and update those procedures, that process that you just said have to be in place. Be ready.
If, if, if nine one seven needs to be updated, it needs to be updated before we start so that we can use it going forward. I would agree with that statement.
Yeah.
Okay, to that point, before I, uh, Cody, you have some suggestions of, of, of updates on nine one seven?
I can get those to you, yes.
That's, she said she had a markup document that includes those.
And, but we haven't seen that yet.
That is a.
And I'm asking her, I'm asking her to send that to me.
Will do.
Thank you. Pete, do you have anything?
Not to put the cart before the horse, but does Grandview or Woodlands have a representative?
They have a signed agreement that says they have already agreed to it. So at this point, we have, they are aware the discussion is happening. But when you say a representative, I read into that, who's gonna be representing in their indeci- their input and, and decision? They already signed that agreement that says, "We will do so." That was designed the day they got the sewer. That was the condition of getting the sewer. So that's already recorded. Did I just send a question property?
Sort of.
But I.
But we're good.
I assume we'll still talk to the HOA board?
Absolutely, there will be outreach in public. Um, Cody, can you help me? What's the, what's the term, actually Cody or possibly Sandy, what's the term that they have in their HOA and everybody's already assigned to it? It's a, an agreement not to resist or push back? What's the, what's the term I'm looking for that was in those?
I haven't seen it yet, so.
In what document? In their covenants, or?
Yeah, in their covenants and their HOAs where they, where they, they dismissed the right to protest the annexation or something like that.
Well, the waive the right to protest, the protest.
Right, right. So that was part of the agreement of getting the services that they agreed to at the time they got the sewer.
Okay.
Okay, back to your RACI idea. So we all just said, yes, let's get, I mean, it's, nine one seven needs to be updated for this purpose of knowing annexations are coming for one reason or another. Is it my understanding that this is a role for council to scrub through and update against MCA, current MCA? And you're not looking for the planning board to do that?
No, I, I'm sure that it's land use and planning, uh, standing committee, and then it will go to the city council.
Yeah, that, that is, that is a council action with planning board being consulted and offering input.
Okay, just to be clear, so. Cody sends me her amended nine one seven suggestions, I will share them with the planning board.
That's informational only for your purposes.
Okay, so you don't want any input on that?
Well, you know, you're, you're welcome to, because I said that's where the consulting comes in, you can do that. But, but you're not, you, you will not be expected nor required to take any action on that.
So, just to be clear, so when I share this with the planning board, if the planning board members has a suggestion, they would sh- give that to me, which I would give to you.
And, and I think the way.
Rather than have all of them kind of.
No, what I think you have is you have a council representative who would collect the planning board's input and thoughts and then bring that to the council conversation.
So what'll happen is we all get this nine one seven. If you have any comments or edits, you will get those to me. We'll kind of consolidate all that information and I'll give it to Sandy.
We will, we will bring it to the council discussion. That is my understanding of how that process would work.
Sandy?
Yes, that would be perfect.
And, and all reason I wanna have it come to me, your comments, is so I can put it into one.
Document.
One document from the planning board, and then we'll go there, rather than you get one from every.
Well, and that, the only thing I would add to that is that from a council perspective, I don't want seven opinions. What I would want, where I am on council, is the consensus of the planning board. And so I think, I think when, if you're building a document of, "Here's what Pete said, here's what Marie said," that's a starting point for your discussion, and then you present.
I'll, I'll handle that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll handle that. Steve, do you have any comments on this?
I'm looking at things that I've become aware of in other groups that I'm involved in. And one of them is, um, the Trails Committee, or Summer Trails Committee for BRTA. And I know that they have an interest in trail connections. And one of the areas they're targeting is the Grandview area. Because they've got pieces of trails on both sides, but that would be the most direct way to connect the pieces. And it's possible, or not, depending on how things play out, that the parkland provision would provide an inroad into that or a possibility to, to implement that sort of thing if and when there is an annexation.
Okay. Marie, do you have anything you wanna add to this?
No.
Any other comments or discussion on this topic?
I was just gonna, I guess, just add, ask, or make, make, see if part of the evaluation is going to, I mean, it, they're all ser- serviced by sewer right now, but I'm assuming they're all in in- individual wells. So I, I guess I'm asking, will the analysis include the possibility of extending water to those annexations? And what the cost of that would be, and who would pay for that, um, as part of the evaluation?
I think the answer is.
Chairman, I can speak to that. So the current ordinances and regulations are that if there is a water main within X distance, that the residents in the area are required to use it. There is no requirement that says that if you're in the city, you must be on city water, you can't be on the well. And in fact, we have several locations within the city right now that are on city wells. So there, 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 there does not seem to be a driver that necessitates water, nor is there an interest that I'm aware of to do that.
My question had to do more with the future and the possibility that the, the groundwater levels that are, they're currently tapping into may or may not be.
Persist.
Persist in the future, at which time I would assume. Persist in the future, at which time I would assume rather than spending X thousands of dollars to deepen their wells, there would be a request to.
Absolutely.
Join into the city water system. And I'm just bringing that up as a potential issue as well as, as associated water rights and, and delegating those water rights to this, any outstanding water rights to the city as part of annexation.
And, and we have had, and there are mechanisms in place for a, called a special, a special improvements district, so a SID, similar to what we did with the, the roads up on the western bench. So it is conceivable that what could happen is, should that eventually happen, the city could proceed and put in a SID to help bring that cost in. And then at that point, the way the regulations are written, they would be required to tap into that system once it was within a certain distance. Did I understand the question?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking about the future.
Yeah.
Things that.
Could come up. And those are all the costs that we're concerned with is, is knowing that there isn't water. And, you know, we don't have an infinite amount of water and sewer capacity. So all of those obviously have to be considered in any annexation.
Which I think explains why the planner and also the planning board are identified as, these are folks we want to consult with before we move forward with this action.
Right. One more question now. What's the timing of this? Cody will probably get me the document as soon as she can. I get it out to the planning board members for comment. We don't meet again for another couple of weeks to, to discuss this and come up with a consensus? I mean, what, what, where are we in timing?
This, I am not aware of any urgent issues pushing on this at all. So this is at a time that we deem appropriate, but we are getting ahead of it rather than waiting until it needs to be done tomorrow.
Given that answer, if, if Cody gets it to me, I get it to the planning board, then we can have our comments on the agenda for our next meeting to come to some agreement consensus and then shoot it to Sandy.
That would be great.
And, and quite frankly, one of the most significant time delays in this process, or certainly a meaningful one, is going to be the transitioning from.
Okay.
Our current planner to a new planner.
Right. Who would certainly have probably input on this.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
And, and if you've ever tried to tie a knot in a hurry, it doesn't work.
Yeah. But we always, we always know where Cody is though. We, we can always find Cody if we need her.
I know, she, I, I, I got a copy in order from Amazon the other day. She ordered a little Groucho Marx mustache.
Yeah, she's going and can need all.
She can hide and be no longer found.
I don't know, I've got a lot of friends, Cody, we can find you. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on annexation?
No, I guess, it was just, we, we have, we are looking at the existing areas that were intended to be annexed to see if it is in fact a wise thing to take on basically as an increase to the revenue of the city. That was kind of the primary drivers behind that. And then the second driver is additional developments that would require or request city services which would require annexation order. But we are not going to provide city services, we're not going to provide sewer without annexing first. And the current process describes that.
All right, the second part of this was deannexation. Is that totally council or is that planning board as well?
It's the same thing, it's a council action, however it therefore dictates a follow-up action by planning board, because you have to update zoning maps and, and such accordingly.
All right.
And Cody, if I misspeak that, please correct me.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, anything else on that? So I can scratch that topic off our ranking list?
Yeah, because all we really need is the input.
All right.
And is this the procedure that Cody put together on exactly where?
The flowchart?
Just so you know, the camera's up there if you're trying to show it to her.
I showed it to her.
I know what you were talking about.
Okay.
So that's the procedure? Yeah, yeah, and then it goes up, and then there's a no there. Okay.
I like flowcharts, I proposed to my wife with a flowchart.
Okay, moving on.
She responded with a spreadsheet. I bet you did.
She responded with a spreadsheet.
Okay, moving on. We're going to go to old business, Bare Tooth Front Community Forum. Jeff and Teresa, do you want, Jeff, you want us to update us on that?
Yeah, and I guess you, you circulated the.
April 4th?
April 4th.
Or April 3rd?
April 3rd, agenda that we had to date. So the only real change, not really a change yet, but the thing that, item that was discussed Friday, we had Jerry Graback?
Graback.
What?
Graback.
Jerry.
Jerry. Jerry Y.
Jerry Y. Joined us via Zoom and, and had some suggestions about how we structured that third segment, which deals, which is the tabletop discussions. And rather than kind of tabletop discussions, what he had suggested and we discussed was the idea that to give people the opportunity to make their comments on poster boards with, and on each poster would be the main topic that they could comment on and would, would also include some, a couple of questions to stimulate or to solicit their thoughts or ideas. And that his, the rationale that he gave for that process was that their experience in, with tabletop discussions is usually one, two, or three individuals dominate the discussion and the others who are maybe less inclined to speak publicly either don't speak or don't get the opportunity to speak. Whereas with the poster board idea, they can go up to the poster and jot down their ideas, their thoughts, their concerns on that poster board. And that becomes kind of a record that thing can be gathered up and, and, and used, used as part of the public input. So the other, the other rationale that he gave, presented for that approach was that it's also, you know, an opportunity for people to kind of come and go and not necessarily be, be constrained to have to stay through the whole thing if, if they, if they don't want to or, or, or don't have the time to, to, to spend. So that, I guess, kind of the, where we're at right now is sort of really thinking about that, that segment three and what might be the best approach. And we'll meet again this Friday. And I think we're getting to the point where we're going to need to kind of firm things up and finalize things, especially with that. So, so initially, I guess, what we had kind of talked about was on that April 3rd agenda, we had identified sort of five main, main topics plus, plus some others. And they, they were all centered or really focused on the existing sections of the growth policy, those, those topic items. And I guess, and I hadn't had a chance to, to really look at what you sent Al in terms of feedback you got from the board at the last meeting. So I need to look at that and, and see how to incorporate that. But, but basically, that's kind of what we're, we're thinking about or talking about and would like some board feedback in terms of, of that approach versus, versus what we were talking about in terms of tabletop topics. What each of those stations would be, we had talked about each of the tables being, having a facilitator with planning board member and BFC member kind of to facilitate that. That part would still stay except, you know, people would be available at each of those station, topic stations to address questions of people as they, as they come up and, and look, and look at that, look at that particular topic and, and want some clarification or, or that. So that part of, of, of planning board just being part, helping with the facilitation and Bare Tooth Front helping with the facilitation would still, would still apply. So that's, that's kind of, was kind of the main, I guess, update to what you had discussed at the, at the last meeting.
Questions of Jeff or Teresa?
I have a question. It looks like the forum is scheduled from 9:00 AM to 1:30, correct?
Yeah.
Yet on the agenda, at 12:15 to 1:45 is lunch. That strikes me as being a really long lunch, hour and a half. And then it's closed out from 1:45 to 1:15.
I think that was corrected on the last, I think it's corrected there on the last agenda.
So the timing is odd of this.
Yeah. Should wrap up.
We'll double check that timing.
Yeah, I don't, I think last spring, our, the lunch, we only had about a half hour. And, and given what we're talking about in terms of sort of changing the structure a little bit, maybe, maybe these times are going to be adjusted as well.
It could be a working lunch too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only other thing I think that facilitates the, the newer idea of standing next to a poster and was also announcing at the beginning of the forum that, you know, if there's posters on the table, that they're listening to presentations and thinking about ideas, they could jot them down very easily as well.
And go post them.
And add them later, yeah. But it provides for much more mingling and kind of levels the board as far as those louder voices versus, you know, people that just want to.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there any opportunity, so let's say someone wants to be at the central business district, but they would also like to be at the community entrances? Is there a chance for them to start on one and perhaps, they're just mingling among all the, all the posters?
Yeah, that's the other advantage I was trying to think of was if we did the tabletops, people, you'd be kind of locked into one particular topic. Whereas this approach, you're free to kind of wander from one to the other. And, and, and if you're not interested in one, you can, or you're interested in more than one, then you can go to more than one of the stations that's related to the topic that you're interested in.
Yeah.
Any other comments? I've done it both ways at large seminars. I kind of like your idea of, of having posters on the wall and particularly if there are sticky notes that people can write on and then go post them. The issue that I've experienced though is if somebody comes up and they have trouble expressing their thoughts in a short way, I mean, they just write and write and write. So there's got to be some way, that's why I like the sticky note idea. Where they can write, write things down and then go stick it on the appropriate thing rather than stand there and, you know, while people wait in line and write. We've done it both ways, but the sticky note one seems to be the most efficient. Then I can sit there and write what I want and then I go find it and stick it.
Yeah, and, and the long hand for people that are short on terminology, right? It could be facilitated as well by the person that's standing there. Help them to kind of congeal their thoughts.
I really like the sticky note idea rather than stand there and, and write. And I also like the idea that you can flow. But again, there should be a planning board member, and then we can circulate as well, help facilitate all this, right? Okay, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I agree.
If I come to your meeting on, on Friday, which I'm planning on doing, I'm going to, and get, you can get the bigger sticky notes that are about this size.
That's what I was saying, how big is the sticky note?
We want the bigger one.
Yeah.
You can get them in a quarter of a sheet.
Three by fours.
And have lines on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know about one of that, but I mean, you know what I'm saying, and people can, yeah.
Like a small index, two by fours.
And you guys are, you know, not, not the little ones, but they're what?
Two.
Three by three, three by three, something like that.
Three by five or.
Two by fours.
Yeah.
Darn, we got to stack this high, the little ones.
They make sticky notes that are like this, with lines on them.
Yeah, yeah.
That size right there.
Yeah, yeah.
And if it's sticky notes, it doesn't matter if they're stacked on top of each other.
No, no, that matters.
You're going to pull them off.
Okay, anything else for Jeff? Teresa?
Uh, we're meeting May 3rd though, not, is it this Friday?
It's, no, it's May 11th.
No, no, the next, our last meeting, it's the regular meeting.
Is it Friday?
Yeah.
It's coming Friday?
May 3rd.
Well, that's our next monthly meeting.
Oh gosh, all right. I, I got a competition on Saturday. I got, all right.
So if, if Marie or I both show up on Friday at noon, there'll be somebody there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who'll be there? Who'll be there?
Okay.
I will not be there.
All right.
I have work.
Well, my only contribution would be the sticky note idea. I, I have a bit of a conflict.
I have J O V, yep.
The only other thing is that, you know, is the, sort of the triggering questions that, or the, that we wanted and, and, and I guess I need to take a look at what you.
I think you'll get some suggestions in that because we've got some feedback from board members and, and they were written in the form of a question or they were in the form of a statement that agree or disagree or yes, no, or what, yeah. So, but you can read through that and see. I try to compile it all into one. Okay? Anything else on Bare Tooth? Okay, the status of Planning Service RSP, I'm going to turn it over to our mayor, Dave. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I am happy to now, I've made a decision. Again, I put together a committee with, that included, among others, the, the chair, Al, and also vice chair Jeff. I had Brian, who is our, our city planner, would be interfacing with that position a lot. I got a lot of information, had some, some follow-up conversations that were kind of spawned by that conversation. And ultimately reached out and have offered that to WWC Engineering. So those are the two folks that you see on the phone. You see Greg Jones, who is, is the, the planning person, or excuse me, the project manager. I know when I said RACI, he knew what I was talking about. I, I'm guessing that, just the fact that it says project manager. And then the J Fadness is, is Jeremy. And so that decision, to, to be clear, is, is I made the decision. I then took that decision to council and got approval on that decision last night. The, the, it was, it was basically which one was the best fit for where I feel we are in Red Lodge right now and specifically to help us kind of meet those statutory requirements. What I was, what I was looking for was a really good Cody replacement. There, there were some concerns that had initially come up as we were doing our evaluations. One of them is Jeremy, who comes as a very, very, very highly recommended planner, lives in an inferior town farther north. And so it was not practical for him to, to be here in, in, in person every week. Although we did talk about, particularly during the early stages, about him coming down and maybe establishing an initial presence. But given that it was important to have somebody here in person, we may actually involve a couple of different people. So at this point, the person we've identified is Greg, who's going to be there. So that will, will be kind of.
Greg will be here.
Greg will be here and in person. Now, that's not intended to be forever and indefinitely. It was agreed, so, so, so the comment was, yes, we want to make this work, we'll make it work. We're not charging you travel to come down there, which, which kind of eliminated that barrier. But at the same time, we are all in agreement that we're going to be working toward a more sustainable, long-term plan because if two years from now, we're still asking corporate to write off travel and, and one of our times, then, then they're going to look at us funny. So there are some bits and pieces we're still going to figure out. We want it to be a mutually beneficial arrangement. I understand that they're in business to be in business and, and I want to respect that. But I also think that it's going to be not only a team that's very capable of, of handling our needs, but a team that's actually going to be able to do a very, very smooth transition and handoff from Cody. This is the heads up, Cody is going to be in town on Friday. I'm going to have to, to wake up and, and come in sometime to do that. But she's mostly working on, on transferring a bunch of files and stuff over. We're going to shoot to, to kind of wrap up as many things as we can this week when it's there. However, she is also committed to, to help us make sure that it is a smooth transition. So there may be some additional. so there may be some additional follow-up and reach out. But again, have to be very respectful of of her new role and her new position, and and so I'm committed to get her out of that as quickly as she is committed to not leave us hanging high and dry while getting out of it. So Jeremy, let's let's start with you. Do you want to take a moment and introduce yourself?
Sure, yeah, I'm Jeremy Fadness, W W C Engineering. I'm a professional engineer and A I C P certified planning planner. I've been doing engineering since twenty or two thousand and one, and then I've been doing planning since about two thousand and seven. I currently am the contract planner for about seven different municipalities throughout the state, and then two counties. So I've been doing that municipal planning work for probably since about twenty twelve, twenty ten, ten, twenty twelve, so lots of different experience throughout the state from Libby to Culverston to East Helena, you know, round up, so all over the state of Montana, so.
One of our negotiation points in the conversations was to make sure that he had second and fourth Wednesdays available, given given that he's doing the very, very similar thing for at least nine municipalities in there that are organized, and and the providences supported it, and Wednesdays were, second and fourth Wednesdays were available on his schedule.
Okay, will Jeremy be my primary contact? Will he be my Cody?
He will, Jeremy will be your Cody.
Okay, so in terms of agendas and any issues that are coming up, Jeremy be the one I contact?
Let let me say, let's hammer out those details, because that may well be Greg. So so part of that has yet to be determined.
And when will that be determined?
Soon.
Okay, because we will want, both Jeff and I will want cell numbers and email direct to both of those guys, but we'll need to know which one is our primary.
I will commit that I will include you and your vice chair in in those discussions as we hammer out the details. I will not, like I said, there was a very, very strong consideration given to the the needs and concerns that were expressed by the planning board, and so as we hammer out those details, I'm just facilitator. You guys, you know, you guys are there to make sure that we do this in a way that works for you.
And as part of this discussion, you'll identify the person, if there's a question that comes from the general public, a developer, an applicant, who their primary is.
So so I can actually add some additional information to that even right now. We have, we went to set up and found it already existed. We have an email that is planning@cityofredlodge.com, just like mayor@cityofredlodge.com. That email address is the first point of contact that for everything planning. So as we go through this list and and we've looked at C U P, sign permitting, flum plane permit, P U D zoning, subdivision, design reviews, all of it originates at that email. At this point in time, Brian, who is our city planner, I am doing cost sharing across two things. So he's in the planning department, which pays the majority of his salary, but he is also our in-person, onsite, reach out and touch and get an answer right now person, and you guys have the option of reaching out to him as well.
To Brian.
To to Brian Hannan. So he is doing that role, and we are paying some part of his salary, which is called cost sharing. So part of his is coming out of the general fund to do that. So so the team is is Brian plus these guys as backup.
Okay. I just think if I'm Joe Blow Public out there and I have a question, I'm gonna want to talk to a certified planner.
And 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 I think that that is correct and that you will, but your first point of contact is probably going to be Brian. You're gonna send in an email, and Brian's probably gonna look at that, and if he deems that it needs to go directly to a planner, he'll forward it on to the planner, where he may have a a screening call, if you will.
Okay.
It was a function that I've learned throughout this process, there's a position they call a front desk planner, which is basically the first point of contact who then assigns and says, this is the appropriate person to take this.
Okay.
At this point in time, and part of this was put in place even before bringing these guys on, we put Brian in that role, and I think I'm inclined to leave him in that role until such time as we determine something else will work better.
Okay. Okay, Jeremy.
Jeremy, I didn't mean to cut you off, was there, was there, I was just, I was just saying, I was really glad you were available on our Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I I'm glad to meet all of you guys. I know Greg's had conversations with with some of you guys. One of these, one of these days, I will get up there to 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 meet everybody in person. Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, most of my meetings seem to fall on a Monday or a Tuesday or a Thursday, so your Wednesday meeting kind of just fit right in the middle. So so I think it works well, and I think Greg and I can can kind of tag team that that, so, you know, for some reason, I can't be available, you know, Greg will will both be up to speed on everything that's going on, so we can we can always be able to answer questions, so.
I will offer that we do have the best restaurants per capita of any place in Montana, so go go ahead and 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 look forward to having you make it down.
Oh, yeah, I'll I'll definitely make make a trip, so, for sure, so, no, I appreciate it, and we look forward to to working with all of you on 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 planning stuff in in Red Lodge, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I guess, yeah, no.
Anybody?
Greg, do you want to have anything? So most of my discussions have actually been with Greg, as we've been identifying obstacles and how to get around them. A lot of those conversations have been with Greg. Greg, is there anything that I stated there that sounded, some of that was, they were making it up on the fly, but anything I said there that that you felt differed from our conversations? Are we still in line and and lockstep and and we'll figure out how to make this work?
Yeah, I think exactly what you had said and then kind of what Jeremy tagged on, where, yeah, him and I will, you know, we've we've worked together. I worked in for three years in Helena with Jeremy, and then I've been in Billings for three years, all with W W C, so I know Jeremy pretty well, and, yeah, we'll be able to work through anything, both be speed, so.
And and there may, just as an F Y I, there may be occasions, anytime you're doing shared services like this, there may be occasions where, like, Jeremy has a a special meeting that he has to attend for one of his other clients, and Dave assured us that they'll, that was something we were gonna deal with with anybody who was not dedicated staff. It was just one of those realities that came up in all three scenarios, and they'll let us know well in advance and and will adapt as as the situation dictates.
Okay, and but for the time being, are we still Cody until the end of the month?
We we are still Cody, but but realize, the end of the month is very, very close.
And Cody, I'll see you Friday for a few minutes, I'll drop in.
That sounds good.
And and just as a follow-up, I have also reached out to the two other bidders who had submitted and had follow-up conversations, very positive feedback, and and I can follow up with you a little bit more on that, but so I feel like we've closed the loop all the way around. The next step at this point is that we are working to put a contract in place. Basically, you don't do the contract until after council approves the decision, so that happened last night. We do have a special meeting on the thirtieth. There is a small possibility, I'll be honest, I think it's a stretch goal, but there's a possibility, if we can get a contract put together by the end of this week, that council can authorize me to execute that as soon as the thirtieth, which is next Tuesday. If not, it would be at the second Tuesday, and and we'll figure out how to address things in that two-week time span.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I guess just to kind of go back and review the process a little bit, so this this was kind of the first time I'd heard that Brian is being referred to as as the city planner. And so I guess my my question has to really do with with process, so based on what you related to Al in terms of the process, if if a project comes before the board, it would be Jeremy who would be preparing the staff report, reviewing consistency with our zoning and growth policy, as opposed to Brian and he.
Yeah, so so let me clarify, I I did not mean to say anything that sounded like Brian is our city planner. What I said, and I'll restate so that I can be clear, Brian will be the person who is first opening all email that is generically addressed to planner app. Brian recognizes that he is not a planner, and which, by the way, is one of his strengths. And 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 that was one of the comments they had before, they had looked at doing some task sharing, and and the reason that that Cody was brought in or that that Great West was brought in was because two not planners didn't equal a planner. And so we recognize that, so we do have, we do want a real planner. It was just basically, we want a staff person in here that we do have control, that is there a hundred percent of the time, that's basically monitoring that email constantly and making sure that stuff is not falling through the cracks. And then, oh, this looks like it needs to go to planner, Jeremy, here it is. Follow up with Jeremy, hey, Jeremy, where is it? Where is this coming? Part of part of my decision process, when I say about looking for a good match for for the city and where we are, is I want it to decrease my workload addressing those issues, and so having a staff person that I have that can work with that team to do that is a mechanism to do that. And I'm still looking at 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 hiring an administrative type person for the city, and then at that point, that person may step in and do that role. This is, this is almost, I need something that's in place and functioning before the end of the month. So I hope that adds some clarification, because I I did not meet this date, and and Brian will be the first person to tell you he is not a planner. I would be the second, and it might happen the other way around, but Brian has no pretense otherwise. It's just he he has that good customer service, he has knowledge of our town, he has, you know, interacting with a lot of those folks, we've been working with him already from from his role in the planning board, and that's actually a very common approach that's used at different municipalities, is they do what's called cost sharing of that position. And so it's a compatible position, but but our planning, our staff reports will absolutely be prepared by our professional planners.
Okay, good. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, thanks, Jeremy and Greg, and look forward to working with you guys.
And and if you guys, if you guys want to drop off, I I appreciate it, you can stay or or leave your discretion, it will not be held against you, but thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Yeah, no problem. Again, looking forward to working with all of you, and I believe Greg is planning on being up there on Friday to meet with with you guys and Cody to kind of talk about that transition and where things are at and and processes and kind of get those things ironed out so we can get that contract stuff finished up and get it into you, so.
All right, we don't have a time, I'm just gonna drop in to see Cody, we're not.
My understanding, and Cody, if you want to add to this, when I tried to coordinate a time with Cody, so so the other thing is, I'm working grave this week, so I'm not sure I'm sleeping between now and Friday, but Cody's, I'm gonna come to City Hall, and I'm gonna park there all day long, so so she will be here.
And she'll be up in in.
She'll be anyplace she wants to be, I'll I'll give her a spot.
Yeah, but I need to find her, so, okay, I can find her. All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Cody.
Thank you.
Updates.
One more time, Al?
Yeah, downtown revitalization plan and growth policy updates.
Yeah, so I checked in with the rest of the Great West crew today. It sounds like you're going to have a draft downtown revitalization plan for your first May meeting. And you are going to have a draft updated growth policy for your second May meeting.
Okay.
And just so you know, on the Great West end, for the downtown plan, Jim Jarvis is kind of running point with Chad Hansen on that. Jim is a colleague of mine, he actually hails from Madison County as well, he's been a planner for years and specializes in grant writing, grant admin, and historical preservation, so really good community development, long-range planner. And then Jerry is heading up or taking lead on your growth policy update, with Chad as his sidekick, so.
All right, give me the, May eighth, the draft revitalization, and May twenty-second, the draft of growth?
Yes.
Okay, the draft of growth policy will not have the input from the forum by then, will it?
That's, I think the point is that it will be incorporated into that draft that you get.
Okay. And how do we do that, Jeff?
Actually, my question is, are, is somebody gonna be available to present the draft at the May eleventh forum? Or at least?
The draft growth policy, I'm not sure, I can ask.
And revitalization?
I do ask.
Who would do that?
Yeah, I'll find out.
Well, May eleventh.
The downtown plan.
For the forum, you won't have the input, we don't have the input until the forum is finished, and that will give you eight to ten days to incorporate it in the draft, and that's a pretty narrow window. Not the fact that it's a draft, that's okay, that's a start, we can incorporate as we go, I suppose.
Well, there are supposed to be focus groups following as well afterwards. I mean, it wouldn't be everything depending on this one forum going in there and then that's it.
Yeah, there'll be several.
This is just a kickstart.
Yeah, okay. I mean, the word draft is the key.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about all that stuff being in there up and early.
But you know how it is, as soon as something gets out there, all of a sudden, you know, I don't want to get it out prematurely. A bit down that road. Okay.
Yeah, that is a good point, is this forum is essentially is not the end.
No, it's the very beginning, as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Why why everybody should care.
Any questions of Cody or anybody on on where we are on the revitalization or growth policy debate? Okay, so May May eighth is our next meeting. We will, that'll be part of our agenda, Cody, if you if you're still agenda girl at that point, maybe Jeremy will be, I don't know. Okay. Moving on, written correspondence, staff communication and updates, Cody?
Not too much, again, obviously, you have no applications in front of you, so nothing received yet, but I, you've got some big ones coming, and I keep saying that, I'm not trying to make it sound looming, but you've got some big ones coming, it'll be exciting, so, but they're they're here yet, so.
Yeah, we've had it easy here the last couple of meetings, so we're gonna get in the big leagues here pretty quick.
Yeah, I I do anticipate, like I said, we we know of of at least four, you know, four to six type of things that are gonna, they're gonna all wait and submit at the same time, that's just how it works, which is why Cody's such an eager hurry to get out of here.
Yeah.
I have a question, I was my understanding that we would no longer be doing any design review, and that's supposed to be done by by a staff person?
No.
Do you remember that discussion?
Yeah, we remember that discussion, and we said we were gonna continue doing it the way we're doing it.
Okay.
I don't remember the discussion, so I defer to the chair.
There there was something that came out of the, there was something that came out of the state of Montana that was focused on, on, I think, Whitefish or Calistoga.
Calistoga, five thousand and more.
And and it said that, you know, they were gonna turn that over to X, Y, Z, and and.
Oh, oh, I know, I know its conversation.
I don't want to go down this rabbit hole, because we've taken care of it. Basically, what it is, is it was for cities larger than ours and a whole lot of qualifications, and so we're staying, we're we're as good as we're good.
We're sticking to a group approval, not an individual, single point of approval.
Yeah, right, so.
Good, good. I didn't, I didn't like that anyway.
We're good. Okay. Anything else, Cody, no?
Nope.
Okay, petitions and communications from the audience, we have no audience, we do have somebody online?
Angela.
Any communications?
I I'm good, I'm just listening in, thank you, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Under other business, our next meeting is Wednesday, May eighth. Anybody have any issues with that that we know of? Any other business from the board?
This, May eleventh is still the date for the forum. Just May eleventh is still the date for the forum.
Yeah, and as far as I know, everybody so far has said yes, and so we'll all be there.
Do we have to be there earlier than nine?
Or seven for you?
If you want coffee.
I think it's important you're there for number three, the, the, the last part. The first part, I think, would be our, our activity.
Do we have to be there before nine, or?
No.
For setup or anything?
Oh, some of us will be there set now.
Alright, good, I'll show up and bless everyone.
Okay.
In your slippers and robe.
So, uh, Cody, will you be our May eighth girl, or will we back to Jeremy, do you know?
I think you'll be with Jeremy, but I'll try to set him up so you're ready to go.
Alright, well, I can't thank you enough again, um, appreciate your efforts.
Um, no problem.
Let's, uh, I think what else, uh, you're, you're down here most of the day, right?
Friday, I'll be there all day.
Um, so let's just tentatively plan, because we're gonna do that, um, that at some time around noon. Sometime around.
Noon conflicts me with the bare tooth forum.
Okay, what, what time is it, I'm gonna have pizza in here, so that we have lunch and people can come in and say goodbye to Cody and thank you in person?
I don't need
You don't need to do that, you guys. Good grief.
That's what makes me nice.
So, I mean, if, if Jeff wants to come.
No, yeah, so what time is that thing from, from when, one to one, right?
Uh, bare tooth, right?
Yeah, noon to one.
So, so, so if, if we had pizza here at one, then you can swing by and say hi if you wanted to. Alright, so let it be written, so let it be done at, uh, Friday at one, there is going to be pizza here. If I find out, I'm, I'm, I'm not confirming that with any other sources, um, if, uh, I find out a conflict, I will notify everybody who's in this group that it's been shifted or moved accordingly.
What flavors, what, what, which toppings are you gonna have?
Alright, this is not, I'm gonna adjourn. Have you know other business? We're adjourned.
Thank you, Cody, you will be preparing the minutes for this meeting, however.
The bowling pregnancy is finally over for the season.
Alright, thank you.
It's longer.
It's seven o'clock?
Well, banquet is next.